Chief is on Zoom as well.
Is this being recorded?
Yeah. Angie, can you hear us?
I sure can.
We can hear you loud and clear.
Excellent.
Ryan on yet?
Ryan's on, he just doesn't have his camera.
Okay. Yep, I'm here.
And you can obviously hear us, great.
Ryan, if you're okay, I'm gonna hand it off to Kim, is that okay?
Sounds great, thank you.
Okay, so with that, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and we're gonna have a workshop tonight. And, um, says, this says special city council meeting, that's not right, is it?
It is.
This is a special night, we don't normally meet on the pitch you think, but it's a workshop special night.
Okay. So with that, uh, we are in person down at the mill and we are recording this as well and will later be posted on YouTube. So with that, I'll call the meeting into order and hand, um, so are we calling this workshop or city council?
It is a special meeting to have a workshop.
It's a workshop.
Okay.
Special workshop tonight, discussion only.
With my dis- confusion, I will hand it off to you, council membership.
My, my name's not anywhere on here. Am I gonna say, okay, could we call the meeting to order?
I already called it to order, you just have to tell Barb to get going with the budget discussion.
Okay, Barb, you've got the floor. There she is.
I told you you had the power tonight.
And I have to tell you guys, before we get started, if I get up and me- leave immediately, my daughter-in-law is due tomorrow.
No.
We got a big baby shipment like this big, wanting to come out. And so every time my phone rings, every time I get a text, I'm like, ah, and every time I, oh, way too much spam. So if I get up and go running out the door and forget to say something, I've been excited for a while.
We'll put your stuff away for you.
And with that, Barb?
Thank you. Appreciate the forewarning. Okay, so, uh, budget discussion tonight. So we are, I did just email out a PDF of this to you guys, sorry, I was a little late. Um, not very much time in between our, our last big discussion and tonight, so, um, this is just for council discussion, we'll go over some, a few things that have changed in our operating revenues and operating expenditures and then, um, kind of look at some citywide cost reduction efforts. Um, we will do an introduction into the capital project plan. Um, the mayor hasn't made his recommendations on that, those capital projects yet, so we will be coming back with that information for you. Um, and then, uh, future discussions, uh, I did have in the staff report that we were gonna talk about revenue generation and cost recruitment, but we've got a lot of survey data that we're going through right now, so it's taking a bit longer to pull together, so, um, we will bring that back potentially on this next, uh, next week. Again, we don't have a whole lot of time in order to get through the data, but maybe we can provide a bit more, uh, next week on that. And then salary survey scenarios, we're hoping to bring those forward on the fourteenth, right now, um, HR is, uh, reviewing and auditing all of the data, uh, so looking at all of the job description comparables and going through that data. Um, and then that will go back to, uh, the consultant and then they will have, um, the next, hopefully it won't take too long, but likely the next week to go through and create the scenarios, uh, that are, are being requested. And then we'll bring those back to council for, for additional discussion with the mayor's recommendation on those. So jumping in, so some updated information on operating revenue, so we did get the property tax, uh, data from the assessor's office. The impli- uh, implicit price deflator, which is what we use to determine whether or not we need to do an emergency resolution as well as the resolution to increase the property tax, then standard one percent, um, is greater than one percent, so there is no additional emergency resolution needed. Um, we update, I got the updated values and it increased our estimates about thirty thousand dollars, so about half a percent, um, overall. And then the, uh, twenty twenty-six budget and forecast model do include that eighty-six percent general fund allocation. Um, and then reducing the street fund allocation to the fourteen percent. So we are, uh, recommending doing this, uh, in twenty twenty-six, we will continue to reevaluate what's going on in the street fund um, and look at, uh, other opportunities as well, so that is about five point eight million dollars in the general fund.
So if the council does the one percent increase yearly, the only additional revenue that that generates is thirty thousand. Is that what that's selling them?
Um, the actual increase is, is, uh, I will double check, I wasn't prepared to actually bring the whole property tax thing. Um, the increase actually was based on the, um, actual levy from last year and then the highest lawful levy, which are two different things. And so when the assessor sends us the preliminary numbers in, um, July, we utilize those and then they updated the numbers for September, but the amount is usually around fifty thousand dollars, that one percent. And, um, then we have, uh, new construction, this year our new construction, um, amount is about seventy thousand dollars estimate. We don't have the, the actual number yet from, um, the assessors, but it's, it's estimated about seventy thousand dollars. And so that just doesn't get included in that one percent, um, allocation.
Seventy thousand dollars of tax increase or seventy thousand dollars of assessed valuation increase?
Tax increase.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, the, the, the value is.
So adding one percent doesn't even buy a quarter of a cop.
No.
Okay.
No.
But? Or?
Or a car. Yes, um, so there's that, um, and then sales tax, uh, so we have been looking at sales tax, um, basically countywide and also been, uh, watching the state's, um, forecast and they're forecasting an even bigger decrease than we had originally, uh, anticipated. So we have reduced our expectation for twenty twenty-five from three percent to about two point seven. And then, um, our twenty twenty-six forecast, we actually decreased, um, from three percent increase over twenty twenty-five to a two percent increase over twenty twenty-five.
So Barb, what was the projection for the increase from twenty-four to twenty-five and what was the actual?
So we're actually reducing it by about sixty thousand dollars.
Uh, as far as percent? So typically, we had been, uh, projecting four percent increase in sales tax year over year, um, and I see now that it's like, it's lower than that.
Right.
Have we adjusted it downward again?
Yes. Yes, we went from four percent, you mean the overall forecast for the six-year period or just this year?
Just this year.
Yes, we decreased it to the two per- point seven percent increase.
From four.
From four, it was at four and then when we brought it back to council, at the council retreat, we had it at three, and now we just reduced it down a little bit more.
Okay.
Um, and then construction sales tax is actually doing a bit better than we had, uh, anticipated, so we did increase the, um, estimated amount for twenty twenty-six by, um, a little under, uh, a little over ten percent. So, um, about a hundred thousand dollars additional, so that is, uh, estimated about a million dollars, uh, going into the, uh, res- the, um, reserve fund, and then we're still have the three hundred thousand going into, uh, the regular general operating fund. We use that number as our base, even though those are one-time revenues, so we did increase that, um, and, um, we haven't changed that, um, allocation from the general operating fund or the reserve fund at this point. We are still utilizing that reserve fund as basically as the stopgap for our, um, operating funds at this point. And you'll see that when we look at the forecast model, again, that has been updated, um, near the end of the presentation. Uh, I'll show you that and it does, uh, show what the changes have, uh, been made. So then investment interest, um, as we know, uh, the Fed rate has decreased. Um, it was at four and a half percent, uh, when I, uh, presented to you last. It is down to four point two five percent and it's expected to decrease, uh, to four percent by year end. We do have this, um, budgeted into our, uh, our forecast, uh, estimated endings for twenty twenty-five. And then they are, uh, predicting that it will, uh, decrease again. They are believe, believe it's gonna be between three and three and a half percent by year end twenty twenty-six. So we do have an overall ten percent decrease in interest in, um, forecasted in for twenty twenty-six and over the entire city, that's about five hundred thousand dollars, uh, decrease, um, based on not just the decrease in rates, um, but also the decrease in actual cash ending balances as we use them. Um, so looking at some of our, um, staffing updates, so as we had mentioned, we had a number of positions on hold. Um, we had eleven open positions that were on hold, um, including building supervisor, the senior budget accountant, park development, park revenue development specialist, the police officers, uh, maintenance worker in storm, the two facility maintenance workers, and then a few classifications or promotions. Um, we did remove, uh, the facility maintenance technicians from the twenty twenty-five budget, um, as those positions are currently, um, open, as we had mentioned. Um, and we removed them from the twenty twenty-six budget, so the intent is to contract for janitorial. Um, and Erin and Sarah might have a bit more on that, but, um, we will likely need to hire a halftime FTE in the parks to maintain this facility during events during the weekend, that type of thing. Do you guys have anything to add on that?
I don't have anything to add, but can you answer questions?
Facilities is a really, it's a, it's a tough, um, it's a challenging division for us. We have two facilities workers, there's a supervisor and a lead, we have seasonals and we had two FMTs that are now, are frozen and going away. And so, um, and seventeen facilities to maintain. So, uh, we're gonna try to contract for janitorial services. I think, um, Sarah's interested in making sure she has staff that can clean this building between events on weekends or, or, um, as needed, so that's that half FTE. Um, that's gonna make a challenge for us in the facilities division, public works to maintain everything else, but we have to maintain some sort of operational standard or struggling there and will continue to. Unfortunately, um, I think it's, it's gonna, it's going to get worse before it gets better. A new city hall is coming on board, a lot more square feet to maintain, we're gonna have to be creative and we're working on it.
Um, and then also, uh, the assistant equipment mechanic and inventory control specialist, that reclassification has actually been removed from, uh, the budget, uh, uh, based on department organizational needs. Um, and then the twenty twenty-five, uh, positions in, it are in process, so, uh, they weren't able to be held and that was for the city engineer and the plans examiner, um, it was, those were evaluated and determined that we, we can't wait on those, um, as they will basically stop operations at this point. Um, Russ's team was having to do double duty and it would have been pushing out, uh, reviews and permits and such for the plans examiner. So that one is, um, they are both, uh, advertised for hiring at this point. Um, the other positions that are being held, overall cost savings, um, moving those out to January first was estimated at about eight hundred thousand dollars. It does, uh, save some funding in future years as, as well, it sort of pushes out, uh, step increases and, um, and, uh, cost of living increases and longevity, so it does push some costs out further. It's not just moving that eight hundred thousand, it does increase slightly year to year. A, a small savings, it doesn't increase that amount, it just, there's a small savings additionally each year. Um, and then moving, we actually looked at moving the hiring dates of those frozen positions, um, from January one to April first and it's about an additional four hundred thousand dollars, uh, that will, um, be saved in twenty twenty-six. Currently, uh, we only have the, uh, them in the budget to, uh, push out to hiring January first. So that is what's currently in the budget. Um, the only change here to the, uh, positions that are in the mayor's recommended, uh, budget for twenty twenty-six, it's the IT application data analyst, that has not changed, um, and then the traffic engineer. Um, so that one has actually changed to quarter one hire so that we can get the, uh, program, uh, put together versus having a consultant put the program together, um, so that is, that it was the only change there. So looking at some updated expenses, uh, in the, uh, citywide, so the COLA, um, have not changed, so we're still looking at, uh, current budget, uh, recommendation we have in there as a non-reps for the two point four four percent. That is ninety percent of CPI, uh, W, and then, uh, guild commission there at three percent and the guild non-commissioned are also at two point four four and the Teamsters are currently in negotiation, as you guys are aware. Uh, medical dental rates, we did get the updated, uh, S, uh, updated cost increases from AWC. So, um, changing from the estimated amounts that we had to the actual increases, uh, saved the city approximately seventy-four thousand dollars from what was forecasted previously. And about eighty percent of that, as eighty percent of our salaries are out of general fund. Um, so you can see here, uh, Regents, uh, increased by eight point seven percent, Kaiser increased by eleven point six percent, Delta Dino increased by four point three percent, and Will Lammett increased by, uh, seven point six percent. One thing to note, there is a potential increase for LNI rates, um, proposed for January first of four point nine one percent. Um, and so that is about thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, citywide, so it'll be about twenty-eight thousand into the general fund if that occurs. So just based on those, um, changes to the revenue expectations and, uh, expenditures, um, I have a few lines here, so the, um, can't even see it on my screen, it's so small. Um, we have the, what was the, um, mayor's, uh, preliminary budget was in green. Um, and we could see that's when we were showing that in, uh, twenty twenty-seven, we would have two point three, uh, four, or three nine million. And then in, uh, we updated this information to the purple line, which now actually shows that the amended preliminary budget, um, in twenty twenty-seven, we increased by, um, about two point three million dollars. So I did add the general fund operating line because those, those, the base budget, the, um, mayor's preliminary and the amended preliminary do include the, um, general fund and the reserve fund, which is the, um, construction, uh, sales tax, the one-time construction sales tax. The blue line at the, um, at the bottom, the sort of turquoise line, it looks like it's actually covering another line there too. Um, the turquoise line is actually just the general operating fund. And so you can see, um, that one's already, um, going into a negative in, in, um, in early twenty twenty-seven. So that's the one that we are currently overspending, uh, operating revenues for, operate, operating expenses. So some of the changes we are making are helping.
If we're, I mean, hopefully I'm looking at the right colors here. But we're forecasting a break even on the general fund in twenty-six, right? If, actually, I don't know if there's months on here, but it looks that, uh, early part of twenty-six we're break even and then as the year goes on, it goes negative.
Well, you can-
An assumption?
You can see from the, the revenue and expense columns that our expenses are continuing increasing throughout the year. And so our expenditures are more than our, our revenues are, and so we will continue to decrease.
Yeah, so in twenty-seven, we're in a hole.
Yes.
So I, I guess that kind of leads to the question, twenty-six is three months from now, right?
So that twenty-seven is actually year end twenty twenty-seven, and so we're actually, we did push it out, um, into twenty twenty-eight at this point.
Right, but your graph shows twenty-six as a deficit. Starts to-
For-
Downward negative numbers.
For the general operating fund, yes.
Right.
Yes.
So I guess I, I, I mean, that's like soon.
Yes.
So I guess I'm wondering, are we discussing potential cuts or are cuts being identified? Because if things don't get better, that's gonna be before us soon. If things get worse, it's gonna be here even sooner. So are, I mean, do we have a, a backup plan? As to, you know, six months into this twenty-six, if we're not there, what are we gonna do?
So we do have, as I mentioned, the reserve fund, that is actually what, it, it's also, um, general fund revenues, and so it is unrestricted revenues, the one-time revenues in the reserve fund. A lot of cities actually, like I had sent to you guys the sales tax information, a number of cities actually just put those construction sales taxes, one-time sales taxes directly into their general operating fund. We just used it, we actually separate them because we would like to use them for one-time costs and not rely on them for salaries and benefits and our everyday operating costs, but it is general fund money. So that's why we say we show on the next slide there, we actually have the general fund, does go into a negative fund balance in twenty twenty-six. The other general funds actually have about twelve million dollars still in them. Now that doesn't give us very many years if we don't make changes.
Well, I guess that's my point is, the trajectory, the, the projection is not positive.
No.
So it would seem, and it's fairly soon in front of us. So it would seem to me we should be identifying some potential, uh, cuts that could be made, at least to have them on the table.
Yeah, and we have, um, we're going through several right now, taking a look at, we did a great, um, uh, survey of the employees, asking where they thought we could make some cuts, some really good ideas with their, and, and big cuts, not just small cuts. Um, one, one area that I think staff has really taken a hard look at is, um, are the attorney fees, what we're paying on attorney fees just for outside of the sewer district. Um, some of the cuts that we can make there that could be a hundred-ish thousand. Um, so that, we are looking at several ideas on those and we're gonna, we'll bring those forward later on, on what we're thinking about on the cut side. But yeah, we've gotta absolutely protect the general fund side, we're just.
And I do have a couple of those, I do have a couple of those ideas here that we, we're going, we're, we're evaluating at this point to try and bring forward. Um, I just kind of wanted to go through where we are right now, prior to making any of these additional changes. Um, so the first kind of thing, um, we can talk about is the reallocation of costs. Um, so we, we already done some of that with, um, the, like, public work staffing. We out- reallocated their, um, costs, um, to the proper divisions that they need to be in, the proper funds. We realic- allocated the revenues to go with those. Um, we can do, public work staff and planning staff already do a pretty good job on, um, allocating or capturing the time they spend on capital projects to the capital project funds, mostly administrative staff, we don't do that. Um, so we are looking at doing that more, I have my accountants kind of looking at, uh, their time and what they're putting up against capital projects and review and working on that so we can, uh, reallocate some of those costs from the operating funds to the capital funds. Um, and also, uh, looking at a potential, um, basically a cost reimbursement for, uh, the administrative overhead. So admin, admin staff, finance staff, IT, HR and MST, um, for, um, the proportionate share of their wages to the permit funds. So we've always kind of kept those permit funds, um, because they are restricted revenue to just those specifically working on, um, permits, but if we had had just a permit district and it was just on its own, you would still have to pay for HR, you'd still have to pay for finance, IT and all these things. And so we are looking at what that looks like based on FTEs that go into the, um, staffing that is sp- almost strictly permit and looking at reallocating some of those costs and getting some of that reimbursement to the operating funds as well. So we're looking at that and then, on the next one, there are a few projects, um, there are actually mostly park projects that are allocated to the pandemic recovery funds in twenty twenty-five. And if you remember the pandemic recovery funds, they're unrestricted general funds, they were one-time funds that, uh, we were able to, uh, utilize and they were grant funds that we were able to utilize for, uh, basically any city operations. And we, um, utilize them for, uh, staffing costs, which, which basically just unrestricted them to general funds. Um, but we had them, um, pre-allocated for specific projects and many of those projects are already done. Uh, the payments have been made, but there are some park projects that kind of keep rolling forward that, um, we, I would recommend that we do a budget amendment and move the cost to the park mitigation fund. Downside of this is that it will reduce the funds available for the continuing park projects. It will help the, uh, general fund one time with that stopgap, putting about eight hundred thousand dollars of those one-time funds back into the general fund shortfall. So, um, as, as, as I was kind of saying, the, um, the capital project, uh, budgets tonight, um, look at that as gonna be more of an introductory, um, into the budget, because we're gonna need to kind of reevaluate what this looks like going forward. Are we gonna be able to continue the projects that we already have in line? Um, do we need to reprioritize or what do we need to do with that? So that's another big one that we're looking at, again, a one-time sc- stopgap, but still it's approximately eight hundred thousand dollars that we can push back into, uh, general funds. Um, and then allocating additional unencumbered pandemic recovery funds to the general fund. So we do have, um, some that are kind of, um, set aside that we're, you know, waiting for some type of, whether it's gonna be an overage for this project or an overage for that project. And I want to say that's probably about three hundred additional thousand dollars that could go back in there as well. So we are looking at these bigger unrestricted funding sources and seeing what we can actually do to, um, maneuver some things around. And I know one of the other things that we're doing with, we're looking at, um, capital projects is, we need to kind of, we need to start planning what the operational costs are for those, like when we actually do a capital project, what is our future operating cost? Is it gonna add seventy thousand dollars, is it gonna add thirty thousand, is it gonna add an FTE? And so we're kind of working on that this year to see if we can move that forward, rolling forward in the next year. Um, working with, um, Eric and Erin, um, this week has been really nice, really, Eric's very helpful, wants to jump in and learn everything he can. Um, and Erin, having been project manager, has a lot of, um, tools and resources that he can provide to Eric and then I can get my staff to kind of help with some of those and, um, start working on those kind of moving forward in next year. Um, so that's a big one for us right now, is looking at, uh, what those capital projects are and how much that's actually gonna cost us, um, operating, um, wise, so. Um, as Mayor, uh, mentioned, we sent out a survey to all staff, um, to provide expense reduction, cost recruitment, revenue ideas. Um, we received sixty-eight new ideas that have been added to our very extensive list that we had already kind of had. Um, some of them were really good, some of them were, you know, not as good, but we basically said, send us everything, send us everything and everything, and it was anonymous, so, you know, we got some things. Um, so we're working through all those recommendations right now, it's a huge list. Um, thank you to, um, Anya's, um, great HR, uh, intern, put all the lists together for us. And, um, I think Caitlin and, and Brett ran it through ChatGPT or through, sorry, Copilot, ran it through Copilot to try and get us like kind of a, an overall summary of what some of these things mean and that kind of thing. So we're working through those, it's just, it's a lot of data to work through, um, and we want to kind of put it in a consolidated form. Like, does this need, is this something we can just do internally that we can just get going? Is this something that's gonna need to come back to council, is this something that's gonna need policy changes? So we're working through those, um, to see what we need to do, is it gonna need additional equipment, software, some of the things? So we're looking at a lot of these, and as the mayor mentioned, limiting use of city attorney, that's kind of a big one. Um, we have, um, I mean, in the past few years, we've required him to come, you know, to, our attorney to come to the meetings and invited him to more of our staff-type meetings. And so we're trying to reevaluate what that looks like, if we don't have these requirements, will that take care of quite a bit of it? Or, um, I mean, we obviously still need our city attorney for things, but I believe we're looking at our, our current policy on, um, when things escalate to needing to go to the city attorney, that type of thing, so. We've got some ideas out there, um, and then there was a number of them in there, like sell the properties that, you know, as they become vacant and we, we do that and we are in the process of that, so there's a lot in here that was, it, they're great ideas, they are things that we're already doing. Staff just isn't aware of the things that we're doing in different departments. Um, automate more processes, you know, or is this gonna take more software, is this gonna take more, um, new equipment? Um, completion of projects, a lot in there about no new projects, no new programs, review current programs, potentially reduce current programs that aren't being utilized, um, planning for future operational costs related to capital projects, that was a good one. Um, limit training to mandatory and necessary, so does that mean, um, whatever we need to keep up our certifications, our current platforms, and going to the finance software conference, going to permit tracks, keeping up on your legislative updates and your mandatory things. So looking at what those are, our staff is currently looking at all of their work plans and what do they need, um, to have required, what are the good things? How do we, um, how do we decide who goes to what trainings, that type of thing? And, and, uh, and then that's for all of us and our staff and council as well. Like, do you, how much, how many people go to each conference, you, you know, working with you guys on, what do you need? What do you wanna do during the year? Um, one suggestion came out that, um, maybe the council president kind of be in charge of the council budget and send out like, hey, how many, here's the trainings, here's the budget we have, who wants to go to which trainings, that type of thing. Get it planned out in advance so that Caitlin can then get all the travel and everything in place early. And so that will actually help save a lot of money and save a lot of, um, time. And Caitlin is happy to jump in and, and, and work with, with you guys on all of that too. So I don't think you've ever really had a big, you know, involvement in your budget, and so it's probably a better idea that you do, we just, here's, here you go. So I think it's a great idea, but one of the things that we, we do wanna caution with, and, and I think council member Dotter had mentioned- So I think it's a great idea, but one of the things that we, we do want to caution with and and I think Councilmember Dotter had mentioned that is yes, I mean, this is definitely a low hanging fruit, but we need to be careful to, you know, to get rid of all the training, we still need to be trained and we, our staff still needs to be trained and and council still needs to be seen in D C and, you know, we can't just stop what we're doing, we've made a lot of progress and so we can't just stop all these things, but we need to maybe talk about limiting them. Couple of interesting things, four-day work weeks, um I know uh there is a, a couple of other entities in Washington that do this. Some benefits of this, um I believe uh it's more productivity, um I think that's what they're saying, a lot of productivity, but also I guess lose, using less electricity if you're, if you're, you know, closed one day a week, that kind of thing, I know. I think uh Jean had mentioned that um a city in, in Arizona does that, they actually closed the building one day and, you know, of course in Arizona, it's a thousand degrees during the summer, so they're saving on a lot of electricity and stuff, so.
The city of Utah actually did that, um with city government, uh they went to four tens, uh they piloted statewide, so. Um so are you talking four tens or are you talking about doing the European model and go on to four eights?
Either or both, but I think the idea was the thirty-two, like that, that is actually what a couple of the, is it Gig Harbor, oh Harbor?
San Juan County.
San Juan County does that.
You know, I guess the first thing that comes to mind when we're talking about a thirty-two hour work week instead of a forty hour work week, right? So what are we cutting that we, I mean, are we staffing as tightly as we could? If we're, if we're talking about taking uh a work day away, instead of doing four tens, we're going to keep them at eight, then will we be able to get everything done? Do you know what I'm saying?
And that was my initial question too, but.
Four tens, you've got the same, you know, same number of hours to feed on the floor, right? And especially when I think about public works and all the stuff they've got going on. And then I had one other question, it just keeps popping in my mind, we have had a lot of presentations on various things um since I've been on council. Have we actually had an outside source look at our city and see where we may be wasting money? You know, where we could tighten our belt, because I think it's great, I mean, uh these are some awesome feedback from our staff, I mean, this is great thoughtful feedback. But, you know, we all have our favorite project, we're certainly not going to, you know what I mean? And and it's hard even on council, we get all these things brought to us and we're like, wow, that is a great idea, I love that. But in hard economic times, I can tell you as a business owner, I have to make some very unpopular, very tough decisions to get my books to balance. And um I'm just wondering, have we looked outside or even is that a possibility to bring someone in and say, hey, you know, Lake Stevens, maybe you could tighten this or maybe we're wasting there? Because if we're even talking about getting rid of eight hours a day, that, or eight hours a week, that tells me, wait a minute, are we wasting eight hours a week now? You know what I mean?
And I think the answer is no, I don't believe we are, I think um, I think the idea of thirty-two hour work week is it increases your productivity. If you go to four tens, often that is more burnout during the day and you become less productive in those later hours of the day. I don't know a whole lot about the programs, um I have not looked into it very deeply, this is definitely something that I think Anya is planning to look into a bit more as uh some of the potential recommendations, again, it's all the things that we are trying to weed through of, you know, okay, it works for some others, but would it work for us? Like, I don't.
You're not going to see that idea for this budget.
Okay.
That's going to take a lot more, yeah, no.
Maybe I'm instead.
And and to answer your question, have we had anybody come in and look? No, we haven't, is that an idea?
Well, let me talk about that for a second, in a prior life I did that. And it costs a lot of money to bring something like that in here, you spend a lot of money to find out, yeah, you can cut staff or you can cut middle managers or you can do this or you can do that. And then most organizations will look at that and say, no, we can't do that, it just doesn't work for us. Case in point was the San Diego School District, who went in with a three-inch binder, said, here you go, here's your cuts, we've ducked, talked about this for three months, cost them five hundred thousand dollars to do it. They put it on a shelf and it's probably still there. So, you know, those, those organizations, Booz Allen Hamilton, uh all the other ones that are out there that, yeah, they would love to come in and have us spend a hundred thousand dollars to tell us where to cut our stuff. But we're still spending money to do that, so do we get a savings or don't we? Generally speaking, from what I've seen over the years, you don't get any savings.
Ryan.
Okay.
Sorry, was that me?
Yes.
Yeah, so if, if we're not going to see it for this budget, it's, this isn't really a pressing issue, but I guess just in general, I know this isn't the purview of the council, but I'm, I'm wary of policies that cut hours when not everybody who works at the city works on an hourly basis, I would just be, I, I would urge caution in not concentrating any cuts among a certain type of employee, you know, I don't know, there's a way to kind of spread the load across all types of, you know, pay positions. But I've been with companies that have done both ways and in my experience, you know, kind of the sink or swim together approach usually ends up working better, so that's all I'll say.
Yep, agreed. Again, you won't see that idea in this budget.
This is sort of a a very small compilation of the suggestions we got in the survey, so it's kind of some, oh yeah, we're, we can definitely take advantage of some of these and some of these that are like, okay, they're interesting ideas, we'll, we'll kind of revisit those as time allows and as council and the mayor have, you know, desire to, to look into them further. Um and then um some people talked about voluntary furloughs or um shortened uh days, um that type of thing. One of the things we say with furloughs though is you still pay unemployment costs, so it's not necessarily a good way to go to uh furlough just because you, you are still paying unemployment and we are uninsured, um we are self-insured um when it comes to our unemployment. And so if we were going to consider that, we would definitely want to look at the insurance being insured. And we did look into this a number of years ago, um and um they start you at the highest experience rating when you go into the insurance program, so it'll cost you a lot in the beginning and then they'll evaluate and adjust as, as things go on, so. We looked at that back in two thousand ten when it was the downturn, so we, we, we stuck with the way we were because we weren't doing a lot of layoffs or anything, so we didn't need to. So this is some other reductions that you guys were trying to talk in about, like are we looking at the big things? And none of these are in the mayor's proposed budget, so it doesn't include any of these, but we are looking at what the implement implications of workforce savings are. We don't like putting these out there, they scare staff, it um sort of can turn into a panic, but we are evaluating some of these. Looking at potentially uh sharing more costs for medical dental to employees, uh currently we do uh zero percent for the employee and uh ten percent for the um spouse and uh dependents. Anya and her team are uh looking at our comparable cities that we use for our salary uh surveys to see what their um uh cost allocations or cost shares are, so we are looking at those to see what that looks like. Potentially, we're looking at scenarios of not taking action on salary market survey, uh no costing of living increases and the most, the majority of these are going to take place on your non-represented staff because your represented staffs already have their contracts and we would have to negotiate all of these as um changes uh to their, to their employment. Um and then I, as I mentioned, the furlough days, so we are looking at these. I want to say more as a high level to see what others are doing, what others in the community are doing, what other cities are doing. We're not the only ones going through this and we're not the only ones who've ever gone through this and so we are taking a look at this, but this is definitely not any of the recommendations that are currently in the mayor's budget right now, so.
You have any dollar amounts for those items though?
Not yet, we are working on some of those. One I did look at was the uh medical dental cost change, uh if we went to, I believe, I, I started at like a five percent for, for employees and then twenty percent, no, it was ten percent for employees and twenty percent for um employee dependents and it, it was about two hundred thousand dollars a year. So I believe um Anya has done some research and I, I think there's very few that actually charge employees for their medical in our neighboring comparable cities. Some do uh charge more for their employee um dependence share, so. So we are looking at some of these, but um the, I think the no cola increase was about two hundred and forty thousand dollars this year. Based on the two hundred, the two point four four percent, yeah. Yeah, and we just need to, like I said, we need to look at the implications because this is going to mean, you know, less retention, less um recruitment. We're going to have to continue going through the recruiting processes and um just a, a lack of trust in the city by our employees, by looking, by, by doing some of these, so. Yes, hard decisions need to be made, but you know, we definitely want to take care of our staff, so.
I, I will just say that those costs benefit, the, the cost for the employees like Microsoft, for example, has a high deductible for all employees, you know, so I mean, they're, um you know, so if the fact that employees pay zero dollars, I mean, is you won't find anywhere outside of city government. Better government, county government, state government, you're paying and you look at people that work in the private sector, they're paying significant self-employed people, you know, they're paying ten thousand dollars um per person, per family member as their deductible on top of the premiums they're paying, so um it is uncomfortable. But I mean, economic realities are what they are. And, you know, do we share the burden across the folks or do we decide like, hey, which, which people services are going to be available to industry, right? And so that's, that's a difficult discussion. But I can tell you, I mean, I, I can tell you from at least the state government, I mean, the, the numbers that we've seen are pretty, pretty significant for a non-significant event like the Great Recession in COVID. It was the first time we've ever had a drop in employment um numbers during a non-major event time in the last twenty-five years, so.
Well, and if other cities are in the same boat we are, and that's kind of what I'm hearing, then they're going to be looking at these things too. So I know when we're looking to compete for employees and we obviously want quality staff and we obviously appreciate our staff. You know, other cities that are running at a deficit already, they've got to be looking at this stuff, I would think.
I will say that we're in a slightly individual um position because we've been doing so much building, we've been growing so much so fast in the last probably ten years and not just staffing, but capital projects needing operating costs and these things. And so we've been, um, we've been moving very fast and we have been council approved the policy of keeping the employees at the sixtieth percentile and, and doing these salary changes and um it has done us very well. Other cities are actually, a number of them um uh through Anya's H R uh coalition, a number of our neighboring cities are doing the full cost of living increase this year, which is the two point seven one. And one is actually doing four percent for non reps. So we are still going to continue to fall behind, not just our sixtieth percentile, but fall further behind from our competitive, our, our comparable cities and the people we're competing for, for staffing with. So a lot of hard decisions in both directions, what do you want to do? I mean, they're actually paying more and increasing wages more and not changing their medical dental and we're looking at doing all of them.
It'd be interesting to see the flip side of this coin, what are they doing on the revenue side? How are they paying for this, right? Because it's a two-sided coin, right? So if they're increasing their costs and still being able to balance their budget, what are they doing on the revenue side that maybe we could consider? You know, to generate more revenue, because cutting costs, especially when you're talking about employees and employee benefits and, and departments I already know are almost overburdened, kind of the feedback, yeah. So if we're not going to cut costs there, we need to figure out a way to increase revenue. And so for cities that are increasing their costs, how are they increasing their revenue?
Increasing utility tax rates, increasing um other tax rates, looking at the public safety sales tax. Some go out for property tax increases, other levy lid lifts, some of those B N O taxes. A lot of those things that we don't have, um I just talked to um a, a sister city who they, we were talking about utility taxes and they said they, they don't have a utility, they don't have a sewer utility. Or they do have stormwater, but they charge ten percent for all of theirs. And so that's how they're doing it, they're, they're actually just, they're increasing the taxes on other services, taxes and fees.
Or not keeping up with maintenance either.
Or not keeping up with maintenance, absolutely. I feel like, yeah, oh, I live there, trust me.
What I hear from Kim is, you know, a business, I mean, they'd increase their revenue and a business doesn't just get a charge more because there's a competitive market, right? So we, you know, we need to be able to provide the existing space that we have to attract businesses. I talked to a business owner this week, they came specifically to our area because of the low crime rate. They said a neighboring city, they're having to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in private security because the crime rate is significantly higher than Lake Stevens and so they specifically targeted this market for that. So we need to make sure that we're, I mean, we have we have a great city, um we need more business revenue coming in and, and that is, I don't know, Kim, I don't want to speak for you, that's what I heard from you, like, hey, raising taxes.
Raising taxes, no, people, yes, it's kind of like, okay, so I have a business model and I need to create more revenue. So I'm going to increase the cost of my goods, my service, my product, whatever, to create more revenue, but now you've outpriced your clients, your customers, right? They can't afford your increase, that's what taxes are right now. We can't for, afford more taxes, people are strapped, the answer cannot be more taxes. I just don't think it, I mean, people are struggling already.
Agreed. I don't know where we're going to get the revenue.
So I'm just throwing lots of questions.
Yes, I appreciate it, that is exactly what this is for, let's discuss this, let's think about every idea we can.
You know, think on both sides of that coin. And same thing with staff, I mean, I think that we have a valuable resource of intelligent people. Right? So I mean, they might have an idea that they've just not felt bold enough to come forward with.
Yeah, like I said, that's why we, we actually did this survey, it was actually one of our staff members who was at the, who was in the background at the council retreat and said, hey, why don't you send this out to the entire staff? Instead of just, you know, looking at it, you know, sort of siloed as in management, great idea, let's do that, let's get the ideas out there, let's get ideas flowing. A lot of it came back, slow down, a lot of it came back, slow down with the program, slow down. A lot of came back with cost of uh levels of service, like what do we, are we, we raised our levels of service so much? But we can't afford that level of service, so are we going to reduce our levels of service at this point? So a lot of, a lot of great information, oh, Ryan has his hand up, it looks like.
Yeah, so I guess uh this is kind of a pointed question, so I'm not looking for an answer right now, but I, I'm wondering, you know, we've, we've talked about the, the different lanes for the council and the executive branch, and so Brett, I recognize that ultimately, you know, we're, we'll pass a budget, but how it gets allocated and used is up to you. And so I'm, I'd be really interested to know, you know, say we go to an extreme example, we say we're not going to approve a deficit budget, where is that likely to land? What does that look like in terms of either, you know, reduced staff or projects that don't get done or severely delayed? I, I would just like to have kind of that concrete example in my mind of what are the ramifications of trying to get that budget back to, you know, balance?
Well, I think if there's no additional new revenues, we'd think we've got to take it from internal and that means that I, you, the easiest, most, um, I mean, where you I don't want to say bang for buck, but where you're going to make a more significant cuts to the budget is personnel. But the problem when you cut personnel is we lower service levels, right? So, I mean, that's the last thing I want to touch, but where else? What are the ideas, you know? Like where do we cut? We are, we're already running, I think, pretty bare bones. It's unfortunate, but when you ask for levels of service, those levels of service cost money. And we've got to figure that, that, that part of it out.
Okay, thanks.
Um, so I had in there, like I said, I had in there that we were going to kind of go over some revenue sources and strategies, this is just from the um council retreat packet. We, like I said, we've just been compiling everything uh together, we have quite a list of things that we're small things, big things, you know, can we, as I had mentioned, change from a five-year to a seven-year um plan on replacement vehicles? Do we go back to buying vehicles? So we're running through all of this stuff, um I don't know how much. I don't know how much council really needs to be in the weeds of that. As, as Ryan kind of pointed out, this is kind of on the mayor to figure out how to, how to deal with some of this. And I know he just wants additional feedback. Like what, what do you, what do you want to see? How do we? Oh, I was like Angie's not up there. Yeah. Angie, Angie, feel free to talk.
Yeah. Sorry. We didn't see you there. Councilmember Jarstak, go ahead.
It's totally fine. I just, I was waiting for a, for a good pause and you know, I've just heard some things that I want to echo. I, Councilman Donahue just made a comment about the extreme request that we not approve a deficit budget. And I just want to plant the seed that maybe that's not so extreme. That that's something that we ask for and that we look at. I hear the mayor's concern about cutting staff and I don't think any of us are looking at that as the, the, the direction that we prefer. But I echo also Councilman Shipman's comments about the, the, about raising taxes at this point right now and, and it it feels unconscionable to move in that direction. I also just, it seems like what we're talking about is that, or what we're saying too, is that there isn't any low hanging fruit. So I don't, I don't see any area where we're going to make one decision and do one thing that's going to, that's going to move the ship. It really feels like we're chipping away at little, small things we could do that might, you know, start that movement. But I, I think this is a lot of small decisions versus one large decision. I just kind of wanted to weigh in on some other, some things that other folks had said. So thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Angie. This is, I agree. There's no one big elephant in the room that we can get rid of, right? Like it's going to be lots of little ones that'll add up to to the elephant.
Yeah, I, I don't have a whole lot other specific information. I would love to get some feedback on what you would like the mayor to work on in his budget. That would be good sort of point for us. We're kind of spinning our wheels. We're, we're just digging into like, I mean, like Angie and, and Ryan were saying, we're looking at a lot of small stuff. There isn't one big thing we can do. If there was, we would absolutely take care of that. It's, it's a lot of small things that we're doing and we're trying to keep up and we're trying to get more efficient. But a lot of those things take time and money. And so we're, we're kind of slow moving at this point, but so I just wanted to, Aaron has got some stuff on capital that we can go into a little bit and get an intro into that. But next Tuesday, we had, there is a council workshop. It's not just budget. There's plenty of things on your council workshop. We could go over some generative revenue generation ideas, but I don't know if that's really going to be helpful in this, in this conversation at this point. On the 14th, we're hoping to bring back the compensation market study for review and recommendations. Looking at a couple of scenarios for council. I know you were hard to give us kind of a direction without dollars, knowing what those dollars are. So I think we'll bring back the 60th percentile like policy right now and maybe be prepared with the 50th percentile of, of what they look like and just try and, and try and give you a couple of options to look at. And then the 21st, we'll basically come back and kind of go over the proposed operating and capital and we'll be very soon into public hearings. So if you have discussion points, please.
So I guess Brett, for me, you know, hearing at least two people saying, you know, they want to, you know, don't want a deficit budget. You know, one person saying no new taxes, which means, you know, that's essentially a third voice. Reduction in level of services. You know, I think all these, anything that's on here, I agree that a lot of these revenue saving things are, are, you know, the thousands or maybe tens of thousands. When we're talking, we need to adjust millions. And so looking at what that looks like with a level of service, I can tell you, I pay 15% for my medical stuff, working for the state. And so you know, I think that's pretty low compared to the industry. But there's just other ways. I understand there's difficult decisions that we have made, but I'm, I'm hearing maybe more so than anytime that I've been paying attention to council, been on council, a desire for balanced budget. And so that's going to require, you know, we heard public comment last week, you know, saying, hey, you know, we need a balanced budget. And this may be the year that we actually get feedback on the budget from people from the community saying, hey, we need, we need to be balanced because our revenues are going up a half a percent projected and our expenses are going up significantly more than that. So for me, I want something quantifiable, something that looks, hey, what does this look like? Like percentages, you know, for the discussion on the mayor's, you know, proposed budgets, not include any of the following recommendations, other expenses, you know, reductions for discussion, just what that looks like, you know, for amounts, percentages. Kind of like Kim saying with our budget, like if I have to make budget adjustments, then that's what I do. I look at percentages and how we need to make those adjustments. But what that looks like, Brett, with the level of service, what does that mean? What does that look like? And so that's something that the public would be interested in is that, hey, do we want to approve, you know, support increased taxes so we can have these services or say, hey, we're going to cut back on these services. We don't have the revenue. But it needs to be quantified. So people can, us and the citizens can weigh in on it.
Which is tough. It's, it's a lot of information to put out there and have a truly informed decision. You know what I mean? Because even, even sitting here and listening to all the information, you're just, it's all kind of scrambled up here and it's not truly an informed decision. Like Barb is got her numbers that she's, you know what I mean? And then we go over here and Aaron knows what he's looking at and we, right? But to overall of the city, and I, I think feedback from our citizens is important. Do you want raised taxes or do you want cuts to services? But the challenge is, is those that say, for instance, you know, I would rather raise taxes than cut services. They're the people that can afford to have their taxes raised. The people that are going to the food bank every week, right? Depending on some of our social services. They would rather have reduced services because they're just trying to feed their families and keep a roof on their head. And that's going on right now. So it's just, it's tough. Even when you put things to the public, I, I, I feel like the people that are going to vote for, let's keep those services up are the people that can afford to. And the people that can't afford new taxes, the other voice may be louder, right? The other voice may have more votes, but the people that can't afford to feed their families or make their rent or they're barely staying in their homes can get outvoted by those that can afford the taxes. It's a, it's a tough call. It's a tough call.
Yeah. And you mentioned that levels of service and it was interesting reading some of the survey answers about we live in the Northwest, let the grass not be watered during the summer. That saves quite a bit of money and water bills. It saves quite a bit of staff time. Your grass is going to be brown. It's, it's not going to be as great to look at, but that is, that is one of the recommendations made by staff. It was like, oh, that's interesting. I wouldn't even have thought of that, but it is definitely a level of service.
But then you deal with more weeds.
Yeah, it's kind of like, where do you go? Right? Right?
Right. So is that a different level of service? Probably not. Angie?
Thank you. I'm, I'm guessing there are staff who would rather see brown grass than weeds than look at potential layoffs. So just, just to put that out there. You know, I wonder, I, I know other municipalities are looking or asking their department heads to, you know, look at a, across the board in your department, what does a 10% reduction look like? What does a 15% reduction look like? I would be really interested to know. We talk a lot about levels of service, but I, I feel like concretely, what does that mean for each department? If there's a reduction in level of service, what, what are constituents and community members going to notice? And then do we, then I think we say, we can either look at a tax increase or we can look at these, the fallout of this reduction in service. And I think that gives us more tangible, just more tangible examples of what we're looking at happening in our city. Should we make the reductions that we need to make or should we look at raising the taxes that are being potentially suggested?
So, but when, Angie, when you say 10% reduction, is that, is that any reduction? Is that personnel? Is that operations? What, what is, what's that 10% on?
Great question. I think that I would trust the department heads to best propose what their department can, can sort of manage in that situation. For some departments, it might be that they've decided that 10% is best reduced in personnel costs. And there may be other departments that where there, there are those reductions that could come from different places. So, so I, I guess I would trust the department heads and the city manager to have those conversations.
Yeah. And, and I mean, those are all great ideas. The other thing you got to think about is it, is it 10%, is it just a blank 10% or is it 10% on impact on the general fund? Right? Because some, some departments don't really impact the general fund that much. Whereas others, the police is 100% general fund. So a 10% across the board cut is, is a lot different, right? The, you're going to cut 10% of the police department, but not 10% of public works because they have streets funds, they have stormwater funds and they have other funds other than general. So so.
You make, I think you make a really good point. I do think it's the general fund that we're, that at this point that we're talking about, that we have concerns about. And so, you know, then it's a potentially a 10% general fund cut versus a department by department cut. I think that's, that's a good point.
And, and so when you think general funds, it eight million, five million?
I, I guess I would say that's where the priorities of the council come into play as to what is important for the city is, you know, is public service or public safety more important than hate to say it, parks, but you know, that balancing act as to what are the priorities? And I, you know, that's probably a hard discussion to have, but I would have a hard time going to the public at this point in time, saying, we're going to be cutting services in our police department when we're already in a, a pretty difficult situation right now.
So, so then if you take the police department out of the, out of the $25 million of expenditures and then ask the rest of them to cut 10%.
You can't get.
You can't get there.
Right. Yeah. And you're talking essentially public works, parks and human resources.
You're pretty much talking parks.
Yeah.
It's normal. It's fine.
And, but your, your delta, your delta makeup is a half a million on that side. Ryan's your hand up?
Yeah. So I mean, maybe this has already been looked at or not looked at for a specific reason. But on, on the, you know, the union contracts we've already negotiated, is there any possibility, I guess, of revisiting those, you know, in good faith and just saying kind of like, hey, we need to bring expenses down. We don't want to cut anybody. I mean, is there any sort of negotiation we had over like, you know, some kind of temporary reduction until the city hits, you know, X metric related to revenue and expenses. And then, you know, we'll, we'll get you back up to, to where we all want you to be. Like, is that even an option? To kind of again, spread this out, you know, maybe everyone takes a little bit less to avoid some people getting none. Or is that just completely unheard of now, once these contracts are settled and signed?
I'm not, that's probably an Anya question. I'm going to take a swing at it though, but you know, like, let's say you, let's say you reduce the contract by 1%. At one, like I know the police, they're not going to renegotiate lower and the, because they have to be competitive with other departments. But let's say you negotiate one, 2% off of that. Is that significant? Enough to, does it make a dent?
Does it?
No. Like, that's going to open up a can of worms that, that the juice isn't going to be worth squeezing on it.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, if that's the case, and that's the case, I just want to make sure, you know, these are, if there's a way to to pitch it as kind of a, hey, you know, we all, like I said, we all take a little less than others to get none. But, um, yeah, it's not an option. It's not an option.
Yeah. And I mean, it's a noble idea, but I think that you're just not going to get the juice out of it.
Yeah, they won't want to voluntarily open their contract up. And then, but we do have an open contract with the Teamsters negotiations this year.
Yeah. I think, you know, one thing we, this isn't like you say, a one swipe at it that's going to solve this problem. And I'm just looking at the cost recruitment slide here and so forth. And I, you know, I think it starts with that. What, what cost can we recoup? I don't, I'm just looking at this. I don't know why we are, I mean, the annexation fee for SEPA, attorney fee and staff time, why are we not covering all those costs? There's no benefit to the city for those things. It just costs us money. Tree removal fee, home occupation fee, business. There's a whole host of things here that we could be
Yeah.
doing that we should be doing irregardless of this budget talk, because these are all things that cost the city with no real benefit.
Yeah, Gary, absolutely agree with you. You know, you look at like the technology fee at 3%. I, credit card fees was 70 Gs?
Forty.
Forty Gs?
You know, that's up.
Yeah. So I, I agree. Like there's, there's some, there's some little paper cuts there that we can really shore up and, and make a portion of this up and, and we're working that.
I, I would say that'd be priority number one to get those things in line. Priority number two would be we have to resolve this Everett water line issue. Whether it's positive or negative, get it off the table. If we don't solve that, our economic development is pretty much nonexistent. And I, I don't know what we need to, to do to solve that, but and maybe we have some recent information.
You have an update on that, Russ?
Sure. I can, I can answer two, two of your questions. So I've already directed my staff to immediately start doing everything in that top right column. The things that we can do without council's authorization. So there are a couple of changes to the fees resolution, but otherwise they've already been directed to do that. And as far as the Everett water line, we are down to one final line of text that we're negotiating about, which is the preference Everett would like to be able to approve the engineers that applicants use. And we have said, no, you can't do that, but we can set criteria as to what makes an acceptable engineer. So we are literally down to one line of text in the negotiation.
And that seems like an issue that can be resolved.
I would hope so.
So. Well, and I, so if I can interject, I mean, so we're looking at the mayor's up for reelection in a challenging race, you know? So I mean, if we can't get closure before the end of the year, then we could potentially be looking at like, starting over again with the new administration and new people and you know, then we're back to square one. And so I, I think the current mayor has been supportive and, and worked well with the city and I'd like to, you know, I'd like to see us build on that. I mean, to the extent that we can.
When's your next meeting on that, Russ?
Their decision maker is out right now. So we gave them comments like a week ago, so I will ping them this week to see where they're at.
Yeah. Make sure you add me and Dan on that. Let's, let's, let's get this across the line.
I can just tell you, when I was on planning commission, I had developers calling and asking, we were talking about Costco and they're saying, as soon as Costco starts turning dirt, we're, we're buying and we're, you know, we're developing. And then Costco started turning dirt and then there was limitations on that and they, they found a way.
Yeah.
Right? And so we got to get, we got to get revenue there.
Yep. What other comments we have on budget?
So I guess my, I'll just put my thing out there, cost recruitment and then for me, and then the areas where any other expense reductions that don't involve staff. And then, you know, I mean, if, if, if that is insufficient, you know, to, to get to where the appetite of the council, as far as where it's at, then we have to look at other options. But I, to me, that's a priority. Cut the. But I, to me, that's a priority. Cut the whatever we can out and the other reduction expenses and then um personnel. I mean, I will just say as far as police go, Washington state's already the least police state as far as the number of police, Lake Stevens below the state average. The fact that we're the tenth safest city is really a testament to our citizens and our outstanding police officers, but there's just really not um any way to further reduce that for a city our size. I mean, that's just not that's just not a viable option.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I I would, I would second that. The police department is not a place to cut. You know, we're already understaffed. Um, they already have people, well, at least from the reports that they have, they're they're pretty tight in their staffing. And um yeah, I I don't think the police department is an area that can be cut.
Yeah, I have to agree with that. I'm not, I'm not going to entertain too much, you know, at all, really cutting anything in the police department that on active, the active police. Uh, the other thing about the recruitment, that's I I like looking at those two, except for one, but that's a personal thing, uh, doesn't really enter into this. So uh, the other one is the external services, which doesn't really affect the taxpayers so much as people that are using the service. So anything that we have an extra, like storm pond cleanup, dead animal pickup, those kinds of things are, as far as I'm concerned, that's a gimme. Uh, we do a service, you pay for the service. You would do that if you had to hire a company to do it. Well, if you're hiring the city to do it, you know, we're a company, so that's an easy thing to do. Now, is it going to really lower the gap? First off, you can't go in there and budget that. It's it's, you know, catch, catch can, you know, tree services, those kinds of things, you don't know. But it's someplace where we're going to get a little bit of revenue. We just couldn't put it in a budget as we're going to get this much money out of that this year. It is that's you're not getting, you're not going to get there. But I I think external services are something that we should look at and just implement almost the same as what when you're looking at all the other ones that, well, I've already told my staff to do those because we should have been doing it anyway.
I will say, um, the city isn't allowed to make a profit. And so us going out there and doing these things, we would just be charging the citizens for our time that we are already putting into that.
Correctly.
Um, and so if we were to do storm pond cleanup, we would likely have to hire more staff and more equipment and more software in order to then bill the people for this stuff. And so it's not necessarily bringing us anything additional without costing us anything.
Angie. Angie, did you have your hand up? I'm good. Thanks. Okay.
Well, I will say, I think that uh we do need to learn um hard, and I I've I've heard that we don't want to increase taxes, but I think having said that, we do need to look heavily at the at the public safety tax.
That's, that's an eight hundred thousand dollar increase to the general fund that goes towards law enforcement. And law enforcement is our biggest bill out of that general fund. And that's that if we want cops running the streets, we've got to pay for them.
Well, and I I mean, I can tell you, because I I've been in all thirty seven precincts, and I've I can tell you every single person um wants public safety. That's the number one thing that people say, public safety, peace, quiet. Um, and businesses, they say when they call the police, they show up.
Yep.
You know, and I said, are, you know, um, I don't always agree with the outcomes I've had with our police, you know, personally, you know, but you know what? Like, that's just, you you don't win them all, right? You know, and so I just, they, we we've got a really outstanding thing going. And I, I guess I'd, I would be remiss if I didn't say two things. One, I just want to thank Barb and the mayor and the other staff for the effort to put on this special workshop. I know that took extra effort. Um, and two, I I think we would also be remiss if we didn't look at all of the outstanding and significant uh investments we've made in our parks. Um, and, you know, we just have to be thoughtful about um not throwing those um we just have to be thoughtful about managing those investments that we've made, I mean, which are very significant um to maintain that to the extent that we're able to.
Yeah.
Um, because our parks are really really outstanding. Um, and it's just a benefit to our community.
Well, and and parks are, parks are an integral part of public safety, right? Like the ability for people to get out of their house and and uh get out into open spaces. I I think that's part of public safety, and we have to think of parks as that way.
And parks are actually a revenue generator as well, correct? No? They don't want to, oh, they don't?
Kind of.
They're an, they're an economic driver.
Right.
Typically, when people go to parks, they're also stopping and getting food out. Especially when you consider the tourism coming in for the lake. Um, definitely, we contribute to mental health, physical health. We are preventative when it comes to crime and healthy lifestyles, especially with youth growing them up. So uh, we don't bring in a lot of direct cash at this point, as we don't have recreation programs or revenue-driven programs. And a lot of the special events that are uh put through the city, we waive fees on and are providing free services, especially staff cleaning restrooms for events that are then profiting. So those are a lot of the things that we've put up here that we should not be doing street closures for free. We should not be hanging advertising, street banners for free. We should not be allowing events to use our electric down here at the park with no additional cost. And so those are some of the things we need to build programs around and start billing out for, and will be things that we're working on.
And while doing that, we're bringing business to the city, maybe not money to the city coffers with our budget, which is what the topic is, but to the city in general and to businesses within our city, correct? I mean, that's kind of the way I've always looked at it.
Correct, economic drivers. So we benefit from sales tax and we support um businesses.
And Brett, I said one question for you. When you were talking about the public safety tax, what type of tax is that?
That's sales taxes. It's a, it's a one.
Okay.
One tenth, and so is that councilmatic? Is that?
That it can be councilmatic.
And under what parameters would that be permissible?
So you could get that done by the end of the year? Is that what you're asking?
I just, just wondering what that, I mean.
You're gonna see it next week at the workshop.
There's a presentation for it. And one of the things we wanted to mention was they, um, with that public safety sales tax can help pay for the public defender's office and the prosecutors, and our public defender's cost is going up drastically this year. Um, I believe we said about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars this year. Steve, I'll get you a percentage on that. Ryan had his hand up first, and then Angie.
Uh, Ryan.
So um, maybe this process is already in place and I'm just ignorant of it, but is there anything we could do to create more of a direct pipeline between the police and the council as far as how our policy decisions on on anything, I mean, you know, zoning, um, I mean, cameras are an easy one that come to mind. But just, is there anything that the the people on the ground, the police officer on the ground have identified where the council could make a meaningful difference in the city to make it easier for them or make them more efficient? Um, I I mean, I'm sure that type of discussion happens internally within the department and over on the executive side, but I feel like, other than, you know, when uh chief or assistant chief come to visit us, I I don't hear a whole lot as far as what the police officers think about the decisions we're making. Now, maybe there's no real correlation there and no way we could help, but if there is, I'd be really interested in that.
Uh, we can ask the chief. I'm, I'm not, I can't think of anything right. Is he?
Chief, did you have a comment?
And it doesn't have to be now, but I'm just thinking, brainstorming of ways we could help them.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for staff. I mean, I could ask them and see if there's anything out there. Um, be honest with you, nothing's been sent back to us on that. I know some people were participating in that survey um and giving their thoughts. They thought that was really helpful and um useful for them to hear their voice.
Angie.
Thank you. My recollection, and maybe we'll learn more at at the presentation next week, was um was it Julie that gave the presentation last week stated that we had until twenty twenty eight to pass the public safety sales tax? Does that seem accurate?
I think it's twenty seven.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven, and then you, and then it has to go to a vote, is that right, chief?
Yeah, after that, it has to.
For that point. Okay, so I, I mean, I I hear the urgency to want to make that decision sooner rather than later, and I think it's just important that we know that um, it doesn't, it doesn't have, it's not a, it's not a do it now or lose the opportunity. I, the other thing I wanted to say about um public safety and law enforcement, over the last, I think, every year since I've been on council, we have approved increased in funding for increased number of police officers. And those positions have not been filled at the same rate that we've approved the increases. One thing that we could consider is that we don't approve increased positions until the positions that are already budgeted are filled. Knowing that we want a safe city and we don't want to compromise public safety, but also that we're not putting money into positions that um because of the current, just the current market for police officers in our county, we're not holding money up in one area where it may not it may not make sense to be spent. So just want to put that out there.
Angie, while while I agree with the premise, uh, the problem that I see with that is that the pipeline for officers is what, it it's all way behind. And if we don't have an approval for the chief to be able to hire, then then it even puts him further behind when all of a sudden we decide, okay, go ahead and do it.
I don't, I don't know. I just, I I think I disagree. I think we've spent so many years not having two or three or four positions that haven't been filled. I I I think if we ever got to a place where they were even, they even had the final position in the pipeline, and the chief came to us and said, we're sixty days from being fully staffed, so I'd like to request an additional position or two at this point. I don't know, I I I don't think that, I don't think that the scenario that you're describing is likely to happen. Um, if and when it does, I guess, then I can be wrong and you can be right, but I just think we continue to tie up funds for positions that never get hired. And I wonder if that's a place where we could look at our strategy differently.
Well, at that point, really, you're just looking at a numbers game. I mean, it's either in the budget or it's not in the budget. And if it's not in the budget, then, yeah, we're closer to balancing the budget based on numbers. But we're not close to getting to what, what the council has said we need to do. So, you know, if we don't, I mean, I the way I look at it is we we know what we need to do with the police department with those, we have four that are that we don't have right now. I mean, we had two more we were going to request this year. Then, you know, we don't put that money in the budget, and then we come in for a budget amendment later on, saying now we want to put it in the budget. Well, then now we're still not balanced.
I hear that. I also.
Way of doing it.
Yeah, I mean, I I hear what you're saying. I I also, and I realize this is a really unpopular position. Um, we're also still the tenth safest city despite the fact that we have those openings. And so let's let's keep doing what we're doing and stay safe and strategically, let's look at financially what makes the most sense for now. And my opinion is that we don't tie up those funds for positions that aren't likely to be filled.
Okay, I'm, I'm just gonna put one more thing out there about what you said there. I'm gonna be a little pessimistic about that. In that I I realize we're the tenth safest city in the state of Washington. That's, that's great. I love it. Uh, that's, that's really good. But we're basically one day away from that going away. It, it's moving our direction. We know that from what's going on in the other cities. So it's only a matter of time before we start having other difficulties based on outside influences. And do we have the police to take care of it tomorrow when it happens? I don't know. I don't think so. But looking at everything that's going on, uh, Linwood and coming uh coming north, I I think it's only a matter of time. And it's not our citizens, it's outside influences that are going to do it.
All right, good discussion. Um, we good with this so far? All right, we're gonna switch this over to Aaron and talk about possible
You don't want to just log in the Zoom?
I meant to do this, I meant to do the Zoom thing.
Let me get logged, you need two minutes to log in.
Steve, it's about a ninety eight percent increase in uh public defender costs, about ninety eight percent increase. We're going from about a hundred and eighty nine to about three seventy five. And that, and that's just for the public defender. It doesn't include the increases that we're anticipating for prosecutor services as well.
That's part of the four hundred thousand dollars that you mentioned, the uh an increase in expenses that are independent of
Yeah.
any of the discussions.
Anything else.
Yes, that that increase is a cop. It could be on the street. Then that will be spending on public defenders.
So that public safety sales tax can go towards that as well. I think that is possibly what's in uh their presentation uh next week as well.
Public defenders and prosecution or just public defender side?
Defenders.
It's that side.
Yep.
Mm-hmm, it's just that side, but we're anticipating the prosecutors are going to request an increase um based on, they they actually go, I think theirs is off of the um CPIW each year, so we'll have to see what that actually looks like.
So to preface Aaron's discussion. Um, as we look at CIP, um, remember that his planning folks are short, we're short a city engineer right now. And we are short um was Ben's spot.
Senior engineer.
Senior engineer spot.
Two vacancies, two of the four sort of project delivery staff members positions are vacant.
So we're, we have them out, we have them out, but they are, they are vacant.
So who's, who's signing on the plans then? On approval?
Who's signing on plans? Consultants. We use, yeah, we use licensed consultants.
And why don't we continue that road?
We can't, that's how we've always done it. Actually, we don't have anybody drafting things.
No, I understand that, but when you sign a a civil set of engineer for approval, you would typically have someone that has a license sign those things, right?
Yeah.
And now you're saying we're using outside consultants for that.
Sure. Yeah.
So why wouldn't we just continue with that?
And not fill the city engineer position?
Right. I mean, it's, it's nice to have a city engineer on staff, but at the same time, it's nice to have a city attorney on staff. We don't have that.
Council member Peter Sagan, are you asking about permit drawings being signed?
Yeah.
The public works director
Yeah.
signs uh construction drawings after they've been reviewed to form.
Okay, but typically somebody with a license reviews those plans.
No, not necessarily, as long as they meet the the city's engineered standards and they're prepared, prepared by a professional engineer.
Okay. Fair enough.
How long have the positions been vacant?
Kim's been
August fifteenth, Kim left, so a month and a half, and then Ben is leaving on the tenth. He's leaving on the tenth.
Oh, yeah.
It might be interesting, um as Gary suggested, you know, what are we doing now when they're vacant? What's the cost difference between handling it the way we are right now when we're hiring? Um, versus once we get someone hired, when we're looking at cuts or cutting costs, hiring freezes sometimes are a part of that. Um, and I know these were two, you know, these are important positions. Um, high paying positions, I would guess. Um, and so if they're already vacant, we're not cutting any of our current staff, but still standing, you know, saving on staffing. And I don't know that this could even be doable. Um, because it sounds like it's all pretty recent. We don't know, is this going to cause a big headache keeping them vacant for very long? But it might be something to evaluate.
Yeah.
Kind of take a look at.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're looking at alternatives now because, because we have two vacancies and they're higher salaried staff and and alternatives to reduce costs, but deliver the same number of projects. And we're going to talk a little bit about it in just a minute.
All right, Aaron.
All right, I'm live. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so uh I usually like to start with a quote or something funny, and this is a quote from my daughter, Madeline, she's four. And I said, if I can get you guys to learn one thing today.
Yeah.
She's sitting on the couch and she said, Dad, I already learned something.
Yeah, we're done.
We're done. Quote a
A something.
Quote a met.
A lot of wisdom in that.
All right.
Deep thoughts.
Deep, deep thoughts from Madeline. Um, so, okay, so the overview of the presentation, we're going to talk about current project health, gets to a little bit of the staffing issue. We're going to review the the draft capital improvement plan by division. Uh, we're going to talk about some unfunded projects and then um, key takeaways, if there are any, and that would just be more of a discussion. So in terms of project health, gosh, that and that would just be more of a discussion. So in terms of project health, gosh, that's hard to see. I'm, I'm sorry, it's so hard to see, but it's always a big thing. So the, the project health column is the one I suggest you focus on. The red, the red projects, for what it's worth, are the projects that really haven't had any attention given to them. And by that, I mean, they haven't done anything yet. So they were funded in the, in the budget to do something and we didn't get to them. So in the lower right, you see that estimated staff hours needed. If you had, a ballpark is usually about seven and a half percent of the total project cost is what you need to administer the project. If you had done that, your hours required would have been close to 9,000 hours for the, the funding that was available and around 5.6 FTE. The reality is we delivered about 3,300 hours of project management and about two, two FTE balanced with everything else. So that's, that's just a metric. We, we keep track of how we're spending and through the year and what's being delivered and what isn't. It's, the sky's not falling. We had some big projects. Main Street was a big one, took a lot of time. We got our annual stuff done, striping and overlays, but we didn't get to, for example, Soper Hill. We just didn't get to it. Uh, some of those earlier TBD projects, we actually finished some this year. They're not necessarily on the, on the list, but so there you go. There's a fair amount of red. What do we need? What do we need to get these projects really delivered if we're at seven and a half percent, which I've used all of my career as a good ballpark? We need around five, between five and six capital project delivery folks focused on that. Okay. We have a new plan going into 26 through 31. There are 44 total projects over six years. 27 active projects next year. It should be 2026. I'm sorry typo. Four new projects, significant carryover from previous years. So I mentioned that we're just not, not able to spend the money, not able to get the projects out the door. Done well with grants, $14 million over the six year period. Now that'll, I think that'll go up. We have a lot of pending grant awards. So that's not including the pending stuff. This is awarded grants and 24 million in 2026 planned expenditures. A lot of that is the city hall complex, 10 million or so, nine million. Okay. It's kind of the hit list. Okay. I don't love the colors, but here we are. So next year, I mentioned $24 million in planned expenditures. I should have run the FTE requirement under it. Similar number in 2027, 23 million, 28, 2028, 12 million, 17 million, 10 million, 6.9 million. So there you go. There's the trend year over year. It's really common for capital CIPs to have this sort of front loaded because the, the vision of the thing is clear. We know where the grants are coming from. We know the projects that we want to deliver. We know what the funding is. It's, it's common to front load. What inevitably ends up happening is these projects get pushed.
So one thing to remember for citizens and for staff and for everybody here, these are different pots of money. Government works in pots of money.
Yeah.
This is not general fund money. This is streets money. It's parks money. It's facilities money. So it's not what we were just talking about. So don't inflate the, the different pots of money.
That is really important. In fact, I don't think there are any general fund dollars dedicated to capital projects at all. We zeroed that line out.
I don't expect you to have the answer now, but for my simple brain, it's helpful to like how, like just percentages. I'd love to see the grant number that you have. That's outstanding. And I love securing those funds. I just love to see like percentage like over your, like how much of that is secure because that just helps me see where we're, where we're making progress. I think we've had a really good success working with our state in front of folks. And I think part because we have really good city employees that we have credibility with these, you know, the representatives that they're willing to allocate funds to us. And so I just want to make sure that we're continuing to demonstrate that to our representatives. So they, you know, we're good partners with them.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah. I think that's important, the relationships we've built. Now, we, we talked about it previously about we, we could use more grants and I think that's true. The challenge is not the number of, it's not the funding in, in capital project delivery. It's the people to do the thing. It's the people to deliver the project. So.
And so follow up to that.
Yeah.
It is grants strictly for the capital portion or is there some that would, would allow for, for example, like the, the cameras that we can, hey, we can hire an FTE based off that revenue. We can use some of that for administering that program. Is there anything within those grants? And I expect you to know the answer, but if there is something, that would be helpful to know. The target, maybe a grant would allow, you know, us to administer those, those funds.
Yeah. And I, I don't have the answer specifically, but many grants do allow for that. Usually it's a cost share, but yeah, yeah.
So the grant, the grants that you have received, the commitments, 14 million, you've got 24 million up in projects for 26. Do some of those grants carry over? So you're really looking at a two-year window, maybe?
It's several years. It's all six years of the CIP. So the CIP duration is the six, it's a six-year period. So 14 million over six years.
Right. But the grants, they don't last for six years.
No, they're, they're mostly front loaded. They're, they're in that first three-year period.
So $47 million worth of projects in the next two years, you have about $14 million of commitments that we can utilize.
Yeah.
Okay. So you're short, short 33 million bucks in the next two years.
Yeah. So we're not short anything. Actually, we're able to fund the, the CIP can be funded essentially this way. I mean, we have some tinkering to do on the backside, some parks things to balance, but generally we're, we're looking like we can fund this capital program.
But it looked like you were missing the staff to be able to do that, correct?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're lacking adequate staff to deliver the projects. Yeah.
Hey, Aaron, what's it look like to, you know, the TBD is its own fund. What does it look like to contract all the work of the TBD? Is that, is there savings there? It's probably a little bit more than, than, because that's what Ben was doing, right? He was running the TBD stuff. So if we replace Ben, well, not, not replace Ben, but augmented your team with straight from the beginning, design engineering, execution, and, and watching the work and then finishing the work. What does that look like if we did that with, with an end with, on a contract?
Mm hmm.
And then allow you, and then the folks that you do have are then able to execute more of these other projects?
I think it's something we should look at. I don't have a number for you, but I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea. I've not had success having consultants manage consultants or just a consultant manage everything. I've not had success with it. Inevitably, staff get drawn in to make decisions and that takes, you end up doing that project management role anyway. But we can look at it and see if there's something, something there.
Yeah. My big concern is that we fall behind on the prod, promised projects with the TBD and especially the, you know, sidewalks around schools, that kind of stuff. And so let's look into that. Let's, let's take, let's take a swag at it and see what it looks like.
Yeah. I, I'm, I share your concern. Currently, we're not really falling behind. We're planning to spend.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I don't want to.
Yeah, me neither.
So let's take a swag and see what that looks like.
Okay, let's do it. All right. So there's the, the summary. I know this is a different, we're kind of shifting focus. You guys, your minds, you're on thinking about budget and, and reductions. Capital is doing okay. It's, it's the people to do the thing that's challenging. Okay.
Capital's doing okay, but execution of capital is not.
Exactly.
And the operating costs after the fact.
And the operating costs after the fact, which we're, we're looking at. Yeah. Built beautiful projects. So here's, here's the street list, and I'm not going to go through it one by one. But while I, what I will have you focus on is you should look at the column for 2026 and what projects are planned. So we have three TBD, four TBD projects technically that will get some effort and attention. So 117th Avenue sidewalk, we should go to construction on that project. 91st Avenue sidewalk, again, I expect to go to construction on that project. Soper Hill would be design. North Lake Shore Drive, that's, that's right here. North Lake Shore and Main Street, some sidewalks around the corner would be designed this year. Main Street, we're wrapping up. And then 131st Avenue Infrastructure Improvement, that's the sewer main project on 131st Avenue Northeast off of 20th. Yes, it's the sewer main and it's a, it's a multi-use path project. It's a great project. And then the bottom, the bottom five, four, five things are the annual, kind of the annual programs. So city road striping, roadway striping, long lines, thermoplastic, $100,000. Annual ADA sidewalk improvements, $200,000 in, we'll see, that may go down, likely will. Annual pavement preservation, that's the asphalt grind and overlay.
Can I ask a question on the North Lake Shore Drive sidewalks from Main Street to 123rd? So I know where 123rd is, and there's that stop sign there. Are they going to go around the corner where the museum is now so that we've got something besides going across the?
Yes.
That's always been a concern.
Yes.
We have the gas station and there's what, three driveways and the chicken and we walk our kiddos on that corner. And we always like, it'd be so nice if there was just a short sidewalk right there and there.
A lot of people walk that.
Full corner. Oh, that'll be so nice.
A lot of people walk that. That's why we, that's why I was prioritized. It scored well.
Good.
Hey, Aaron, the.
Thank you.
Safety and calming program. What, what does that entail? Just high level?
A variety of things. It really is, it really is requests from citizens. So Millsburg is a good example where we have this issue in the, in the evenings and nights where people are using the road and speeding and causing trouble. So we'll look at traffic calming for that. And we're looking at South Lake Stevens Road and the East Lake Shore, South Lake Stevens-Machias intersection, that area at the south end. We have some incidents and some challenges down there. So it, it really is responding to the public's concerns.
The reason I asked that, I was talking to some of the community and they shared an area in the community near a school and there was, and they said, hey, and so I gave my card and said, hey, please reach out. Haven't heard back from it's been a few days. But, you know, I, I'm not the one to assess that. I mean, you guys do a really good job of citizen input. So I mean, you know, I appreciate that. I mean, it represents the city well. But I just, I just don't know how much, how many dollars are there to be able to, what those projects cost, you know, because I mean, it's, a lot of them are significant, right?
They are significant. I mean, it's, you know, we'll, we'll spend between $10,000 and $15,000 on an engineering study of South Lake Stevens and Machias, just to look at a three-way stop intersection and some candlesticks. Seems small, but we really want to have traffic engineers look at it and make sure it's safe. But again, these are these little things we can do that really impact people and the, and the folks who live here. So it's an important program.
And kind of in a smaller impact, I talked to your crews that are out on Catherine Drive right now, working on that stormwater retention pond. First of all, what an outstanding job they're doing. It looks amazing.
Good.
But I stopped to talk to them about it and what a polite, friendly, nice group of people.
Good.
You know, when it comes to interacting with, you know, people walking down the sidewalk and having questions, they, you know, I think I caught them when they were on a break. So that was probably helpful. They weren't throwing things in the wood chipper. But no, I mean, a very good group of, of people.
Yeah.
And they're doing a beautiful job.
Yeah, that, they work hard.
Yeah.
That crew works hard. I'm, I'm really impressed with what the storm crew has been able to accomplish over these past few years.
And, and we haven't seen that pond in years. It's been filled with leaves and debris and.
Actually, when I went by there, I was like, what happened there?
Yeah, yeah. And, and good group of people.
Yeah.
The people walk.
Yeah.
And just to put it out there, I mean, I saw some pretty interesting feedback from social media about people trying to spin the city in a certain light. You know, I make it look as bad as possible. And I think it would be good for us to acknowledge what the purpose of those things are. Because it's, it's pretty interesting how people would go to these crazy places. And then it really is about managing our stormwater and making sure our lake water quality is the best it's ever been. It's because we have a stormwater manager and a team that are doing those things.
Yeah.
To do that. And I said, but if you add to like some average keyboard jockey, they're like, oh, the city's killing trees and they're, you know, trying to ruin salmon streams and, you know, the stuff that people are putting out there to try and.
Yeah.
Get traction, you know? And I, I think having correct information out there would be helpful.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah. Shannon, our, our environmental programs manager will be back with this program. She's, she, she came with the basin study, but she's got another program she's working on, a public outreach program to, I think, get that started as, as part of the NPDES permit process. Okay. Any questions on streets?
Got anything else?
I do. I have more.
All right.
I have like four more slides.
Crazy.
Okay.
Were you going to give us an update?
I like the good news.
The apple cup was a painful one. It was here. Okay, here's, here's the parks list. And this is the, this, this is the list we're really working on right now. And I'm, I'm grateful to Sarah for taking a look, or Director Garceau, for taking a look at it today, this afternoon. Give us some grace on this. We're going to come back and finalize it. So don't, don't hold us to it. It's still a draft, but I think what you, what I would focus on is, is the list of projects for 2026. So Frontier Heights Park, Phase Two, that project is designed and it's been awarded. So it will be constructed this, this, beginning this year and into next year. Eagle Ridge Park, Phase Two, that's design funding. Cedarwood Properties feasibility and design. Sarah, you correct, you correct me if I'm out of line.
Yeah, no, that's correct. And Cedarwood's fully granted.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Westlake Park is, is, what are we doing with Westlake Park?
Westlake Park, when we redid the parking lots and put in the dog park and the trail, originally was also supposed to have other recreational elements. It used to be used as a playfield, but with all of the holds and uneven ground, it really isn't used anymore by any sports. It needs to be completely tilled up and redone. It also was visioned to have a playground there, but as current staff are looking at it, the playground's going to be far too close to the road. We're under power lines. There's a lot of restrictions. And so we need to look at what type of recreational elements will go there. We have $100,000 grant for this. And so we just need to decide if we're redoing the playfield or if it is feasible to do a pump track or any other kind of recreational element. So we're starting to look at that by the end of this year.
Cool.
Pickleball court?
Possibly. We do have four going in at Frontier Heights.
Because it's a, it's a pretty big space. Actually, I see people play with their dogs.
Yeah.
Throwing, you know, like frisbees and stuff.
Absolutely.
All right. Davies Beach Pier resurfacing, we've talked about that. The pier needs to be resurfaced and maintained. North Cove Parking Lot Recreation Building, that's a feasibility and study for the area where City Hall currently sits. And if those buildings are going to be relocated, what would it look like after that? And finally, the Bayview Connector projects that are progressing and people are using. What a, what wonderful projects. Those really is nice to see people on those trails. Anyway, all right, let's go.
What is the recreation building at North Cove Park? What's that about?
So is the North Cove Parking Lot and Recreation Building. We currently have the two module buildings of City Hall. And so there's been talk when one vacates.
Okay, that's.
Do we keep one? Do we keep both? Do we clear them both off? And so that's all part of the study. And how do you redo the parking area and what are we keeping?
All right.
300,000 would be high for planning, but it would also consider through any studies and possible some upfront money for construction to actually begin next year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. It's going to go, the, the size gets smaller, the number of projects. I got you. So this is the facilities list. It's, it's short. We completed many, and I'll get you a list of completed projects this past year in a future briefing. But we have the Evergreen Office Building HVAC and alarm system that we're working with Director Wright on, who's, who's working on the City Hall complex. And then we have the museum and the municipal services campus there.
Grace, Wright and I are working on those numbers. They're actually slightly different than that from the municipal services building. So I think we talked about that last July, we brought forward the final budget. And so it's actually a bit higher than that.
Okay, we'll get that put in there.
Coming out of the REIT fund.
Yep. All right. This is the, one of the last slides. So Storm, again, a lot of good work on their part. The first project is the bridge replacement at 36th Street. That's a one-way bridge with a, a signal, a temporary signal there. It's, it's actually, I think it's working okay, but that bridge does need to be replaced. It's, it's a, it's, it's a bridge. It's failing. And we're looking at cost effective alternatives to do that. Now there's a Public Works Trust Fund loan for that project. The interest rate, I'm told, is like less than 1%. It's very low. And it's got a, but it does have a fairly short repayment. And it's got a, but it does have a fairly short repayment period. We're looking at cost-effective alternatives for that bridge.
Is that anything to do with our exceptional Moody's Bond rating or is that independent of that?
No.
It is independent.
Independent.
Public work.
That's their standard. It's a, it's a great program.
You want Public Works Trust Fund Loan.
Yeah.
If you could get them.
Well, it's like fractional cost.
It is.
But, yeah. But every year, the legislature looks at rating that fund and getting rid of it.
Yes, and they, so, yeah.
It's too bad. Okay, uh, Catherine Creek Hartford Crossing, there's another culvert, uh, in, uh, or excuse me, this is the larger, uh, Catherine Creek, uh, crossing replacement here on Old Hartford, uh, and the realignment of the stream channel. Uh, Thirty-Sixth Culverts Replacement, I, I won't go into it, but there's a handful of projects there. Uh, finally, uh, there's the, um, Swim Fee Rate Study and Fee Adoption. So it's been several years. I think we looked at stormwater rates in twenty eighteen. It's been seven years. It's time to look at them again. Okay. This is a list of unfunded projects. There's a lot here. Replace speed feedback signs is one that stands out to me. Love to be able to do that. Lundin Parkway Splitter Island Fill. I don't know what else to call it. It's those islands as you come into the, the city that seem to fill with weeds pretty rapidly.
Seem to fill?
Do fill with le, weeds. Seem.
They're getting muscular, the weeds are. They're getting like thicker and stronger in there.
Well, they, they went out and burned them off again a week ago, but it just, it's an uphill battle. Uh, they torched them. So there's, there's a list. I think there are some, some opportunities here to, uh, get some outside funding for some of these things. But some just may never happen, quite honestly. And that's, that's okay.
Is there a priority for those projects that you guys have, that you have scored?
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, we score, uh, we, we're working through scoring. A lot of these are new projects. We're working through scoring them now. Okay, I know. Okay.
All right, any more questions, Aaron?
I just wanna say I'm impressed with all your grant raising. That, you know, like, oh no, we've got the money for this. Um, that's impressive. Thank you. I'm, I'm sure that wasn't easy.
Do you anticipate with all these projects increases or decreases in mitigation fees?
In mitigation fees? What do you, what do you mean?
Traffic mitigation, parks mitigation?
I will have that, um, information for council shortly. We've had our traffic engineer update all of those fees based on the, capital facilities plan, so.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, that's RCW.
All right, council membership, it's your meeting. You can adjourn it if you wish.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
You can.
Yeah.
Second?
I oppose.